She'll be happy on either side.
No, no, that doesn't really matter, it's just cleaner, but... Hello, Peter?
I know, I'm covered in lint, I'm so staticky right now.
Peter Matt's on video. What can you see? Matt, can you see?
Charlie?
I feel like I am seated right next to you.
Okay, good to be here.
I can, um, I've got like this nice view of the table.
I can see.
I feel very short, but that's all right.
That's great.
I can see, uh, I can see Matthew from the Clipper.
Oh, wow.
Yeah, here he is.
He's got some good range there.
Yeah, so, yep, I can, uh, I've got a good view.
Okay, great.
All right, so, I will call the meeting to order. And we will stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our first order of business is the approval of the minutes from December nineteenth, two thousand eighteen. Any, um, well, do we have a motion to approve?
So much.
Second.
Any discussion?
I don't have any comments.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Thank you, Matt. And, public comment? We got no one tonight. Yeah, the Bruins are on later. Okay, reports for the school committee, Dr. Antonucci.
Yep, good evening, um, a few things, first, I just want to kind of announce for folks who might be watching this that we have a change in our school committee meeting schedule. Um, we were originally scheduled to meet next on Wednesday, February thirteenth, and due to some scheduling conflicts, um, we're gonna move that to Wednesday, February sixth. We'll make sure that gets advertised and announced, so our next school committee meeting will be Wednesday, February sixth, um, same time, seven, seven PM. Couple other things, uh, this week we had our, I don't know, probably our final full group, um, meeting with our strategic planning steering committee. We're sort of near, we're probably at the like seventy-five percent stage of our, of our process. It's been a really, uh, really good experience, um, very inclusive process, pretty thorough, uh, process, and it's at the stage now where we have, um, like, our plan has good bones, and, you know, we need to, we need to put some meat on it, um, but we have a good framework in place that will now take to internally with our leadership team, um, and try to just enhance what the, what the full steering committee, um, developed and, uh, the, the next, and we'll be glad to share the next step with the school committee at any stage you want, and then, uh, we think that we're gonna, originally thought we were gonna present it in February, we'll probably present it to the school committee in March, at our March meeting, if that works, but I feel really good about it, um, I think our, uh, our themes and our approach and some of our tentative action items are gonna be kind of exciting and, um, uh, and strategic and ambitious, you know, so, stay tuned, I just wanted to give an update on, on the process. Couple other things, I just want to share something that I think was really cool, that came from Sarah Maguire, um, and, oh, Tanner, I don't know if you're gonna mention this, but over the next few weeks, we have a group of tenth, eleventh, and twelfth grade students with a World of Difference Club, are you gonna talk about this? Good, there you go, um, at the high school, coming to work with our seventh graders during I block, um, I lab block time. A World of Difference Clubs, um, can be found in schools across the country, and their mission is to combat prejudice and promote respectful communities in schools, so it's kind of a brand, if you will. Students leading the sessions with the seventh graders have been trained to do so through a World of Difference Institute, which is run by the Anti-Defamation League, um, and we're really excited that these, that we have students in our district who are gonna be able to provide this training to, to younger students. In the sessions, they're gonna focus on community building, um, an examination of bias, um, and the goal is to create the most inclusive and positive environment, um, you know, for all of our students in our schools, and so, um, last night we actually had a, uh, parent forum to talk about this initiative, I think, right, specifically?
Yep.
I heard it was a fabulous presentation, it wasn't very well attended, um, but it's, I think it's just a really exciting initiative, and I, I think the exciting part for me is the fact that our high school kids are gonna be working directly, um, with our younger kids on a super important, uh, and timely topic, um, about promoting respectful communities, so, I thought that was really nice, and I just wanted to share that with a broader, broader audience. And then my final thing is, I just want to remind, uh, everybody that we are coming into, knock on something, but, uh, snow, the snow season, um, and just to remind you all that we are rolling out our pilot program of Blizzard Bags, again, I don't love the name, but, the, the plan at this point is to allow, just to remind you all, allow one traditional snow day, should it, should it be a traditional snow day? And then probably roll out our first Blizzard Bag, uh, first and second, and possibly three, depending on the winter, uh, over the next series of, of storms. I hope we don't have any days off, personally, um, but if we do, I just want to remind folks, I, and it's, it's been really well received. And if you get a chance, and I can send you the link, if I haven't already, but if you, if you go to the front page, and I'll send you the link, but the front page of our district website and the front page of all of our school websites have a Blizzard Bag link, and that'll take you to kind of a further set of links that have all the, all the Blizzard Bag assignments, um, and at the upper levels, links to Schoology, Schoology courses, and they're really creative, um, and thoughtful assignments, and, um, it's exactly kind of how we envisioned it, you know, it's things that are focused on, um, really important topics like social, emotional learning, and at the upper grades, life skills, things like resume building and that type of thing, so I, I think it's, you know, I think it's gonna work, um, but we'll see, it's a pilot. Danielle and I were talking to a group of super tenants today about it, and we said, if it works, great, if not, we'll, we'll adjust and see, see what we can do in the future, but, um, I'm really excited about it, so just stay tuned, 'cause it's, uh, now it's getting real, now that the storms are coming. All right, so, that's it, for me.
Okay.
Oh, please, yeah.
All right, Danielle.
Um, I just wanted to, and since we have Heather Tucker here, mention that, um, we currently have put together, and Mrs. Tucker mainly put together, a dyslexia screening review committee for the school district, so, um, there's some new legislature that's been passed in the state requiring school districts to have, um, mechanisms in place to make sure we're doing early warning screening for students at risk of, um, difficulty in reading areas, so, um, we had our first meeting on Monday, seems so long ago now, um, so that committee consists of, um, our special education director, myself, several reading specialists, speech and language pathologists, um, special education teachers, and, um, just a comprehensive group of educators. We have Amy Holland, our early childhood coordinator, so we're looking at the, um, screening tools that we already have in place, because we have a lot of great tools, we want to make sure that we're using those effectively to be able to identify students at risk. Um, it's something that we're excited about, and we'll be working on for the next few months, and so we'll be able to come back with some information about that at the end of the school year to see what we found, and if we have any recommendations for, um, whether we need to purchase additional screening, look at our kindergarten screening and make some adjustments there, or if we can just determine that we have streamlined some processes to make sure we're doing that, um, effectively. If you want to add anything about that.
We talked about how we needed to different types of professional development, um, I think we're looking at how to really kind of vertically articulate what we're doing, so maybe each of the levels has something, and looking at, uh, tiered support plans that may come along with some of our data and data collection, um, but really looking to utilize and maximize the, um, the tools we already have, and then, yeah, we're just trying to assess, are we able to capture everything that we need, but it was really an exciting conversation, there was a lot that was talked about, so that was nice.
Great.
That's it for me for now, because I'll be presenting with, um, Cheryl about the data management consortium.
Okay. So, Katie, you get to give our, give your first report to us, yeah, welcome.
And so, my update tonight is primarily going to focus around the financial status report, so hopefully everyone has a copy of that in front of them, Matt, the, there was a copy of the file, um, in the folder, so hopefully you have that, um, so, there's several different pieces to the financial status report, so I hope to just quickly review each of those pieces, so, um, the first document, which is the, uh, Word document, um, so, contained within this document is just a brief analysis of the numbers that are actually on the financial status report, which is more of, um, the second exhibit, so that's the one that's titled Fiscal Year Nineteen, Q Two Operating Budget Financial Report. So, I just tried to provide some context around, um, the numbers in the total categories in the report, as well as, um, an explanation around some of the percentages that are referenced in the report as well. So, I just wanted to also note, too, that there were a few different changes on the financial, uh, status report for the operating budget, um, changes that you may not have seen in the first quarter report. So, the first change, um, the first significant change, is that we have started the process of encumbering salaries. So, what encumbering salaries means is we are projecting what our expense, the, or the expense that we will incur until the end of the fiscal year, so that helps us to better project our position at the end of the fiscal year. And then the second important change that we made to the report is we, I added in a column for the, uh, fiscal year nineteen grant and revenue offsets, and I think that's, um, that's important information for us, that shows us the revenues that we're receiving from any tuition or any user fees, as well as some of our grants that were awarded, and those, um, that revenue really does help offset the expenses that we're incurring to, in the operating budget. So, as I go through the report, as we go through and look at the different categories, I have it separated out by the major location, I call it, and then further separated out into the salary and the expense columns, so, um, the fiscal year nineteen salary expense, as you can see on the report, year-to-date, it's just over eleven million dollars, and so, what I tried to do, too, is just take a weighted, weighted average to see what percent of an expense that we would expect to incur, um, with the salary budget, and so, the, the expectation is that the salary should be expensed at thirty-seven point five percent as of the close of the second quarter of the fiscal year, and we are, um, right at thirty-eight percent, so we're tracking right on target. Again, adding in the, the encumbrances, that allows us to see what we expect to expense for the remainder of the year, and then taking the revenue offsets that we have available to us, that leaves us with our funds remaining, and then it gives us that important percentage of the ninety-five percent that we have committed of the operating budget. So, I just wanted to make mention, too, that there are certain salary expenses that aren't contained within this report that we do expect to incur for the remainder of the year, and those are expenses such as, um, some expenses due to substitutes or any overtime expenses that we may have, um, as well as any salary column changes, there's, um, a number of expenses that will help us, um, get closer to that hundred percent, and we do expect that we will be close to that hundred percent at the end of the year. So, similarly, in the expense category, we have, um, listed on this report by the major location, the expenditures, so that is, again, what we've spent as of December thirty-first, so during the first two quarters of the fiscal year, and then we also have our encumbrances, so any of the commitments that we have for our expenses that we will incur by the end of the fiscal year, so those expenses could be any of our contracted services, whether it be transportation, um, if we have, of course, our utility bills, we have encumbrances for those in the system. So, we do have a number of offsets available to us, um, that will lower that expense number, and as we look at that, those numbers right now, we do have nine hundred and eighty thousand dollars remaining, um, but we do expect that, due to some of the, again, expenses that aren't necessarily reflected in this report, that we do anticipate that we'll incur by the end of the fiscal year, that that number will certainly move closer to the hundred percent by the end of the fiscal year. So, what I've, what I've done in addition to just providing the numbers broken down by the locations, was I also just did a quick graph that shows the expense comparison, so, this is just a representation of the expenses that we incurred by the second quarter of twenty eighteen versus the expenses that we've incurred so far this year. And it's important to note, too, that in the graph, we haven't taken into account any of the salary offsets up until December thirty-first, so that's why you might see, um, specifically, if you look at this spec, special education expense line, there's a huge discrepancy between the expense, and that could be due to the fact that in fiscal year eighteen, we had already used, utilized a portion of our offsets to offset those expenses, so that's where you see the, the major variance between those two fiscal years, so I thought it was just a, a nice, kind of a quick representation that shows us that, um, we are tracking very similar to fiscal year eighteen with expected increases. And, another update that I'd like to provide is an update for our, um, capital funding that we have, so, kind of taking a little bit more of a, a project-based approach, so, um, and just providing a status on our capital expenditures. So, we have completed nine of our capital expenditures to date, and we have two of our capital projects that are, sorry, I'm just shuffling here, so we have, um, I'm sorry. I just lost track of it, of course, thank you. So, we have completed, so, I'm sorry, the top section shows the, the projects that we've completed, and that's as of December thirty-first. And then we, we do have two projects that are in process, um, that have not yet been completed, and that was as of December thirty-first. And then there's the two projects that, the projects are completed, but we do have some final invoices that are pending. And, and then the last two, so these projects are, um, it's the first phase of a multi-phase project, so, we won't be able to start those projects until further funding is secured, um, so that's why they have not been started. Is there any questions?
So, the, the covey is gonna be, we need more money, this capital, right?
It's in this.
And then that's a little start, yeah, okay, sorry.
No, I was just gonna say, um, you know, this is a complete step change, um, and, um, I'm thrilled to see it, but also I'm really excited, 'cause I had a number of questions, and you answered most of them in your commentary, so, um, related to the encumbered but, um, anticipated but not yet encumbered expenditures, you mentioned, like, substitute teachers as an example, but also, um, columns, and is that, those roll in when a column is basically hit, and if it's continuing at or whatever, that, what, what, I can't remember the steps in columns, are columns continuing at or tenure?
The length of service.
Sure, so, the columns, so the teachers do have two opportunities to submit for a column change, so one is, um, one of the opportunities is at the beginning of the year, which has been reflected in the report.
Yeah.
And then the, uh, second opportunity is later in the year, so it would be reflected in the third, um,
In the third quarter.
In the third quarter report, and, so it's when, say, for example, a teacher moves from the master's column to the master's plus fifteen, so if they've completed coursework, or, yes.
Okay, great, and, um, you had outlined some areas of potential
Oh, yes.
expense concern, but on the ca, uh, capital budget side, it doesn't look like there's any area, like, you're not seeing any projects that are coming in, um, that are putting, putting stress on the budget, so no, no concern about the capital budget.
No, no concerns with the capital budget.
That's great. Well done, thank you.
Thank you. Matt, any questions? Can't hear him.
I lost you, Matt.
I was on you, no.
All right. Awesome.
And then just one last thing, and I don't, don't wanna make this overly busy, but an aggregate number would be great, that shows eighteen and nineteen?
Absolutely.
If you think that would be helpful, just so you can get a quick view of, you know, where we are relative to, um, last year, you know, in aggregate.
Oh, absolutely.
And maybe that's even a separate page, 'cause it will throw your scale off, you know what I mean? That might diminish the ability to see the other ones, but just having an aggregate number, and I think you have that aggregate number already, you've shown it, um, so maybe it's easier to graph it.
We definitely have the aggregate number, I'm showing it for nineteen, but it's just not for eighteen.
It's gonna screw up the scale, I think, it's gonna make all the comparisons too small, so, so I'll take that off the table. It's good the way it is.
No, I must be, um, graph.
It's just a good visual representation.
It is.
Doing okay, yep.
Yep.
I think it's
And you can see where we're spending more money than last year.
That, Katie mentioned that, though, that, that's real, so we, we changed, Katie and I changed the way we are
Allocated.
Using grants and revolving funds this year, we're really just making expenses, um, in the appropriate accounts, and then making several large, for lack of a better term, transfers from grants revolving that at strategic times during the year. It's a, I mean, I don't wanna get in the weeds, but it's, it's just easier for us to track, so that's, that's why you see that difference in spend.
Right, well, salaries, too, DHS salary, it's higher in FY nineteen than eighteen, if I'm reading it correctly.
Yeah, all the salaries theoretically would be slightly higher.
Yep.
But, yeah, that one has a little, little larger.
District administration's, yeah, so.
Change of personnel, that kind of thing.
Right.
And, what's the thinking on the timing of any use of spent stabilization funds that require both, uh, you know, select and approval?
Right.
When's your sense of how, how you do that, would you do that on a quarterly basis, or as needed, or what's your sense?
I think that's something that we would definitely have to, so, we would talk about that internally, and we would have to, obviously, bring it before the committee, um, to be approved, but I don't
Yeah, we've been talking about it, I mean, you know, it's, it's a little too early to project if we have, if we're gonna have any unexpended, I mean, significant amount of unexpendable balances, Katie and I were talking, though, if we can, kinda wanna hold off as long as we can on that, if we don't have to take the whole amount, we won't.
Right.
And so we're kinda just waiting, but if, probably by the next, end of the third quarter, we'll have to make that decision, just 'cause we have to get the
The timing.
Kind of that transaction in process, you know, the approvals, but, we're kinda, partly maybe being overly optimistic, but, if we can, if we can save that
Yeah.
We, we want to.
Yeah.
Kinda hit, hit the other offsets first, and then
Yeah, we started to draw that down around this time last year, I think, you know, it's like
Last year we had, right, yeah, last year was four hundred thousand dollars, and we were tight.
Right, okay, good.
That's great.
Yes. Okay, thank you, Katie. Tanner?
Okay, I just have, uh, four things on my list of, um, list tonight, so the first thing is, last week, the National Honor Society and Student Council hosted their annual Coco for Crayon, which is geared towards freshmen in their first time taking midterms, so, it ran for two nights, Wednesday and Thursday night, and they had the opportunity to get tutored on the school subject of their choice, um, and the breadboard also catered with cookies and study snacks, and when I was a freshman, that was a big help to me, and I know all the kids really appreciate that every year, so that's definitely awesome. The second thing is, uh, just follow up with that, midterms is this week, so Monday through Wednesday, it's two exams a day, and students get out at eleven-thirty, and then tomorrow we just have our last exam, so we get out at nine-fifty. So, midterms also mark the closing of Term Two, which is tomorrow, January seventh, and then grades will be posted the, uh, next Friday. And lastly, uh, the twenty nineteen junior prom has been set on the calendar for May fourth, and that will be at Gillette Stadium, so we're looking forward to that.
Same red carpet and everything?
Yes.
In front?
Yeah.
Yeah, excellent. All right, chair report, I have a couple of items, um, at Monday's Digital Literacy Committee meeting that I was at in the afternoon, um, I learned that the state has set minimum operational requirements for the two thousand nineteen MCAS testing, for all the computers to be used, um, which affects our students in grades three to ten. So, there's actually a tech specs sheet which specifies which, which operating system is required for which device, because as we all know, we kinda use hand-me-down equipment for our elementary students, so now, and to be forward-thinking in our future budgets, we're gonna have to set aside money for updating those systems, so we'll be in compliance with an unfunded state mandate. My second thing was, oh, just kind of following the, um, teacher strike in LA, and I was looking at some information this morning, the reasons that the teachers are striking, and LA is the second largest school district in the country, um, school funding, teacher pay, and class sizes, as well as they wanna nurse in each building, and the annual salaries out there range from forty-four to eighty-six thousand dollars, with the average salary being seventy-five thousand dollars, and one of the class size proposals was just astounding to me, it was to drop max class size from thirty-six to thirty-five students in grades four to six, and from forty-two to thirty-nine in high school, so that's what they're up against. The National, uh, School Board Association states eighteen is the ideal class size for student achievement, so, um, okay. The next thing I have is a personal piece, so bear with me, um, and I'm glad you brought up respect, and our older students teaching our younger students respect, 'cause to me this is a respect piece. So, please accept this, social commentary is my own opinion, not that of any other school committee member or of the Duxbury Public Schools. A video produced by a to remain unnamed high school student surfaced on Facebook this week, and it was on Duxbury Helping Duxbury, as a promotional piece for this student's private YouTube account. The video was purported as a highlight reel of an also to remain unnamed girls' high school sports team, and it's set to music. The choice of accompanying song set off alarm bells amongst many in the community, and was thus brought to my attention by both parents and community members at large. While I believe the videographer has artistic freedom granted in the First Amendment, and in no way violated anyone's rights, I would find it remiss to not appeal to our community to address the lyrical content accompanying the video of our students representing our community in their Duxbury High School uniforms. The song is titled Low Life, and is, it is by Future, feel free to Google it on YouTube. While I'll spare us all the exact lyrics, suffice it to say, the song is about getting high, executing violence, and perpetrating sexual acts upon females. In twenty-three short lines, the B-word is used four times, the F-word is used three times, the N-word is used three times, and ho is thrown in once. While it is not in my purview to suggest While it is not in my purview to suggest punishment for anyone involved, it is, as a school committee member, upheld to ensure the safety of all students, to assert my opinion on this matter. One question asked about the above lyrics are, do they cause harm? I would suggest they indeed do. I'm absolutely disheartened that in 2019, women and girls are still being objectified through this example of rampant misogyny. Do I believe my girls are safe in this society that views them this way? Not always. When I asked the videographer who chose, who chose this song, that person first said it was the girls' team, but later admitted it was the boys', and the girls consented. Examples such as this are exactly what we, as teachers, administrators, coaches, parents, and school committee members are trying to address through our much-talked-about social-emotional learning initiatives. Recognizing there is always a perceived and actual cultural divide between students and the grown-ups in their lives, it is all the more relevant for us to reinforce our community's core values, including respect, responsibility, and integrity. In 2012, the Harvard Women's Soccer Team learnt that they had been sexually raided by the men's team via a scouting report. I would like to end with an excerpt from their 2016 public response. Quote, "We are concerned for the future, because we know that the only way we can truly move past this culture is for the very men who perpetrate it to stop it in its tracks," end quote. As stewards of our community, I argue we have the collective responsibility to educate the next generation we are sending forth to Harvard, or Yale, or Quinnipiac, UMass, various workplaces in our society at large. Not only with the highest academic standards, but with the trust that we have done our very best to prepare them to be respectful citizens. Thank you. Okay.
Can I just comment, having
Yes.
seen it or been aware of it, but I thought what you said was, was really thoughtful and insightful and spot-on, so, well done.
Thank you. Yeah, it, thank you. I agonized over my word choice. So, any question? Matt? You good?
Sorry, I was, I was on mute. I would just, I would echo, I would echo what Peter said, and, you know, I applaud you for, for raising the issue.
Thank you. Okay, discussion items. Update on changes to the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education's Special Education Program Monitoring, Heather. And are you gonna?
I have, yeah.
Matt, let me turn you, okay?
Okay, so I always feel, in my role, it is to share information, keep you updated, and things that change within laws, regulations, especially as it pertains to special education. So I wanted to talk a little bit about a process that's called the Tiered Focused Monitoring Process. And for anybody who remembers, it used to be called the CPR, which stands for Coordinated Program Review. And in the CPR, I'm gonna do a brief update, so I'm brief, very, very brief tonight. So we used to have review cycle that was six years, and what would happen is we would do a self-assessment. The state would then look at that, send somebody out, they'd review a few of the records we had submitted. They would also come and do some onsite activities, but every three years, you'd then have a mid-cycle. And they'd come in in any areas that you had potential non-compliance or partial compliance, they'd come back and look at. And this cycle just went through every six years. And where, as part of that, we would do a thorough assessment of twenty-five records. And when they came onsite, they'd tell us, we're gonna look at ten more records, and they called them activities. Yay, they're not really activities. So my last coordinated program review in my previous district involved about a hundred and fifty individuals with three state DESI people who came in and did interviews, and interviews ranged from, you know, three hours for myself, or twenty minutes for paraprofessionals, and it's actually quite intense. It, it takes for larger districts five full days, in smaller districts, two to three. So given that the state has come in and they have decided that they were gonna change this process to make it a little bit more user-friendly, the state doesn't want to be a gotcha, they really want to work with you, and if you have things that you identify or see, they wanna work with you to help your district grow, be compliant, continue to develop really high-quality programming services, things such as that. So they have turned this into the Tiered Focused Monitoring. So I'm gonna tell you a little bit about the tiers, then the focus, and then the monitoring. So right now, there are four different tiers. The top two tiers are where seventy to eighty percent of districts are falling. As we kind of go through this, since we are new, this is a new process. There are some districts who were either, if they were at their mid-cycle point, they were put at the second ladder part. We were to approach a full cycle, so we are starting with the second Group A to start. I'll tell you more about Group A and B in a few minutes. But you have some different tiers, and obviously, as you get down to the lower, you see the red, that's not where you wanna be. That's where less districts are. So I'll tell you how you kinda get placed into a, a group. What they do is they do a little risk assessment. And at that, they look at special education disproportionality. Are we over-identifying students, under-identifying students? Are we over-identifying students with discipline? They look at what we call the Problem Resolution System, so if parents are filing complaints with their dissatisfaction, they have one of two ways. If, say, we have a student where we have an active signed IEP, student is supposed to receive, for example, a speech twice a week, and for whatever reason, the district's not providing that agreed-upon service, they can file with that Point Quality Assurance Group, who will ask us to investigate, look in, and then they could create a finding. Or if the team has recommended two times thirty, however, as a parent, you are looking for greater than that, that's more of a substantive type of qualitative look for your child, then they will file with the Bureau of Special Education Appeals. So they look at that complaint data, and then they will look at what's called the Public School Monitoring. So they are now calling this process and who comes in, the PSM, Public School Monitoring. So I'm going to review more in-depth the top two levels, because this is where most districts fall. We have the green, so this is the highest. Your meeting requirements, all of your data points indicate that there's no concern on compliance or performance outcomes. In the yellow level, there's low, low risk, and there's no demonstrated risks in the areas associated with student outcomes. So you may have compliance issues, but that are not impacting students' access in receiving services as they should. When we talk about the performance outcomes or student outcomes, the state had had these state indicators, and state indicators fall around evaluation timelines, transition-based services, parent surveys, and it's a way for the state to actually obtain data that they then in turn share with the federal government, and that's kind of how different funding sources all come down, in that trickle-down effect. They have these fifty-six special education criterion. There, I think, are eleven, civil rights, seven, English language learners. With that, they break them down into six different, seven different categories, team process, IEP assessment. So those are where some of these parts come in. We have an evaluation process. So right now, we're undergoing our self-assessment, where I'm looking at our compliance, I'm looking at our records, student records, timelines, I'm gathering this data, I submit the self-assessment, the state will look at it over the summer, and then assign us to some sort of process to come out and either do an onsite record review or do observations, and from what I'm understanding right now, they're tending to do one or the other, unless they see more egregious things, and then they'll be coming back into us. So they will send us a written report, and in that, we may actually have to do what's called a SIMP. It's a Continuous Improvement Monitoring Plan, and in that written piece, we will have to respond to anything that is partial or non-compliance. But I'm not anticipating that for our district. And then as you go down that tier, you know, you have a full CPR at the level of red, like we used to do. They are coming in, the state is telling you what they're looking for, they are really taking control of the process versus the top two. It really is district-driven. So the monitoring piece, just so you can see how it breaks down, we have almost two, three-year processes. So we have our self-assessment, where we're looking at the IEPs, they have that onsite monitoring, and then we have an internal SIMP or Corrective Action Plan if necessary. Then at the fourth year, we start that second self-assessment on a different section of criterion and things that we need to look on. Again, we have the onsite, and then any progress monitoring if necessary. So, one more, please. Thank you. Right now, we are Group A. Group A doesn't make you better or worse than Group B, they just divided the state into two, so it's not, don't think of that as good or bad. But we, right now, are really looking at special education, and we are really looking at our identification of students with disabilities, our IEP development, our programming and support services. And that happens in the form of the record review, the interviews as appropriate, or... And then the Group B, they look at our licensure, professional development. This is going to be heavier in the civil rights look, and they tag the English language learners in with the special education grouping when we're looking at student records. So really, that is kind of a quick down-and-dirty of how the process is broken down, and where we are now. Right now, we have these state indicators that, what they found was there was duplicity in data collection. So if we were looking at transition planning, we used to do State Indicator thirteen, where we'd have to go to student records, looking at any student fourteen-plus, are they being invited to the meeting, are we setting transition goals? Do students have the transition planning forms as we're obligated to have? And then they were also looking at it as part of that coordinated program review. So they're just rolling it right into this tiered focus monitoring. So these are some of the data collections that we're doing, and I'm doing, so I'm reading student progress reports. I probably did a hard audit of a hundred and twenty, out of the four hundred and twenty student progress reports. I did, you know, a quick breeze-through, but I'm really trying to get my thumb on the pulse and the flavor of what's happening here. Seeing a lot of great things, I was able to really look at goals and objectives, and I'm having some really good conversations with staff during our special education grade-level meetings, and it's really, it's been positive, and I think it's really going well. So I look forward to this process, I think it's really informative, it really helps us to drive our instruction and our quality to continue to be, you know, top-notch. So that's it. Is there any questions?
Heather, I had a question about the Tier A, Tier B.
Sure.
Do we, or Group A, Group B, do we do three years in the Group A and then
Correct.
Three years in Group E?
Correct.
So it's just the way that the state has split up?
Yep, it's, it's, so that way, they can actually manage monitoring us, because the Group A tends to be a little bit more intensive with the amount of student records that you go through. They're only looking for ten this time around. You know, the first time I did it, I sent them like forty, and they called me, and they're like, please never do that again. So, you know, so to narrow it down to ten, because we have to have, looking at across all of the twelve disability categories, we have to try and do a representation of that, representation of preschool, initial evals, three-year evals, amendments. We have to make sure that we are looking at another cross-section of any discipline, transition planning. So you're trying to find the records that have, at a district, transition planning, three-year eval, you know, everything, as many of the things that they're looking for in one record, so we're, we're trying to narrow that down as we go.
But the expectation is you're, you're identifying opportunities for improvement in
Yes.
developing improved performance within a three-year cycle.
So one of the things that I really think is where the state has turned from that gotcha kind of piece is if I see things right now, if I'm looking at records, and I can say, okay, you know what? This is maybe a better way to phrase things, or, you know, this would be a little tighter in alignment. I have opportunities to do those trainings now. As the time I submit the self-assessment in May, if I see things that really need to be addressed, I can address them and actually present my staff trainings and anything that I need to do before they come onsite, and it counts as working towards it. So they want you, instead of saying, hey, we're here, you didn't do that, you didn't fix this, anything that I see that would need to be addressed right now, I have the opportunity to do, and it quote-unquote counts. It counts for that continuous improvement, which is really nice.
Right, which is a big change from the old process.
Mm-hmm.
The CPR that we, that you alluded to at the beginning was just a burden some really horrible process in districts.
It was very intense.
This is, this is all-consuming in some ways too, but the former CPR was
It used to take me two years to prep for the CPR, like, two full years with staff training and ongoing, and, and I've had from, you know, November first. So it's a little on my usual, but...
I do wanna remind folks that, that Heather is, you probably have, what, thirteen or fourteen weeks in the district so far? We are, you know, things don't slow down, because there was a, there was a transition in leadership in special ed, so this is good work, you know, and add it to the list of a lot to do.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Heather.
Charlie, I need, we have a video, so I need sound in my computer. Is that up front? Or is that under the table?
No, it's not, it's not, it's not a microphone, another microphone next to you. That's where I can go right now.
Just use that?
Yeah.
Do you want mine?
Just use the second one.
Okay.
One for you to talk, and one for the sound from the machine. Okay, where's the speaker on your laptop, you know? Looks like it's right there. Okay? I might have to switch this one, too.
Alright.
I don't know where it appears, there used to be a table, I don't know where they should have been.
Okay. We've done a lot of work in here. Do you wanna start, or you want me to start?
Why don't you start?
Okay.
I will go in the slide two.
Okay. We applied for, and the district has gotten into the Massachusetts Small and Rural Schools Data Management, EDFI Consortium for data management. We are currently in the planning grant, John, Danielle, and I went to the first convening. CELT is a regional center for educational leadership and technology. And they've been working for three decades to align leadership, learning, and technology in support of improved student achievement by working with educational organizations to support and transform teaching, learning, and administrative processes. So a year ago, February eighth, coming up, I had gone to a workshop, and they were looking, talking to districts in Boston, and Worcester was there, there were a whole bunch of us talking about how we can do a better job with data management. And John and I both have contacts at CELT, so we had heard about it and had decided to go. And why this is important to us.
It's important to us, we are just, as a school district and
As districts across the state, we're, we're drowning in data, but it's not always at our fingertips when we actually need to use it. So on a daily basis, we are looking at informal assessments in the classroom. We're looking at standardized testing results, both as a district, as well as at the student level, and how our students are progressing as they go through their years taking MCAS. We look at common assessments that are given to all of our students. We do a lot of assessments at the elementary level, like AmesWeb, Star Reading, Star Math. We also have a number of state accountability measures that we're tracking to make sure that we are doing everything we need to do for all of our subgroups and meeting all of the students' needs. So we have survey data, and we have a lot of curriculum resources that include online assessment components. So we collect data when students are at risk for needing intervention in particular content areas, and we're consistently looking at how we can improve, working with our data and making instructional decisions based on the data that we're working so hard to collect. And so one tricky part of the data use in the classroom is that not all of these programs read each other and communicate effectively and efficiently. So we're always looking at ways to create data reports that we can use in real time, and not just every couple of months when we have formal data meetings, or yearly when we're having an IEP review meeting. We really want all the data that we're working so hard to assess throughout the year to be at our fingertips when we need it on a daily basis in the classroom. be at our fingertips when we need it on a daily basis in the classroom. So that's one reason that this project was appealing to us. I think
Do you want me to do this one?
I can do this one if you want. So what we're finding right now is there's no standard way to get educational data out of our software. And Cheryl often talks about the healthcare industry has mandated that medical systems work together so that your doctor's offices are communicating with each other and our patient data is in an easy-to-use format so that we can access that. So the Public Education Center has not pushed for there to be a standard in that, a common data standard. So there's a lot of data in islands that school districts spend a lot of time correcting errors. We're trying to get our data to integrate. So when we're purchasing curriculum programs, we're asking our student information system to communicate with different curriculum programs and surveys that we're administering. It's a lot of work on the, on the end of the data team here in district and it's not efficient. So when we purchased new programs, a lot of times they'll say that they integrate with our student information system, but the reality of it is when we go to do the import, they don't read each other and ends up taking hours and hours of time and we were waiting for our student's data to be inputted and it's just a waste of our time. So it's one reason we're looking at more efficient ways to be able to manage the mountains of data that we have available to us.
Yeah, it's probably the most frustrating part of my job. So...
Oops. Just got bounced off.
I think because I'm not I think because I took it out of the school committee.
Right, so while Cheryl does that, there's a short video that explains the EDFI data standard, so it explains it a little bit in more simple terms.
While she's looking, I don't know if you guys are going to say this, but this is huge that we got selected to participate. Are you going to say this?
You can say it.
This is kind of a big deal. It's funded by the Dell, Dell Foundation. It's a small and rural school consortia. We are really not really small or rural. So sitting at the table, we are definitely like the biggest and I would say most suburban of a lot of the groups and so we're thrilled to be able to participate, but it is, I don't want to minimize, it's kind of a, it's kind of a big deal. And so we're, we're really excited about it. I mean, it's kind of a, you know, it's data, right? I mean, it's not something, it's kind of nerdy thing to get excited about, but it's really an incredible opportunity for Duxbury to be on the cutting edge of data management.
And in the presentation, Cheryl, how many communities have been selected in Massachusetts?
For our consortium, 21.
Okay, and it's free for us, right? So that's the other thing, which is wonderful.
It's free and we just feel fortunate to be part of it. So it's something that we think that the state will probably move towards in the next few years so that this is accessible to more districts, but we were able to get in on this pilot and be able to kind of be the pioneers of it. And Cheryl did a wonderful job. Today, they had the second convening of the committee that met. And so during that meeting, she was commended just for the work that she's done gathering all of the assessment data that we would be interested in finding ways to kind of manage and then inputting a lot of information about our school districts. So she, they were using her work as a model within this consortium as well, so she's doing a great job with that. While she works really hard to get the video.
Yeah, I don't think it's gonna
Because the analog to this in kind of the commercial world is like having a dashboard where you have, for a given student, you could get access to all of the various bits and bytes of information available that you can just have a single place that you could go on any student at any time and see all of it.
It almost seems too good to be true, although we know that other states have been doing this for years now and so it makes us think that this is, this is something that's feasible for our district.
I can't get to the website.
It's okay. We'll just go to the next slide where Cheryl, you can take over from there.
Yep. So in 2011, the Michael and Susan Dell Foundation founded the EDFI initiative, now known as the EDFI Alliance. The Alliance created the EDFI data standard for the education industry, which is deployed through an operational data store and an application, allowing us to put our data into a single platform. The capability of data analysis, it has the capability of data analysis, no fees, it's secure and protected, non-stop improvement of resources because everyone in the EDFI Alliance shares the reports, the data reports that they develop, and a growing vendor list. So it has a common language, you know everything, it's zero fees, secure and protected, non-stop improvement and it powers technology for the students, for the teachers, and they can pick their, the tools that they want to use. So through the United States since 2011, there are 30 states who use the EDFI Consortium. And then you'll see the orange dots. The orange dots are districts that are licensed through collaboration. And then the blue dots are separate licensed districts. So if you look in Massachusetts, Boston is the only district right now that's licensed. They were at the February 8th meeting last year and they were so excited about it and they have a whole data unit that they actually had got it up and running. And at today's technical advisory committee meeting, they spoke about the challenges and, you know, it's not easy, but, but long-term, it'll, it'll be really good for us as we get those data reports out. But getting the data into it is, it's easy to set up. Getting the data into it, because we have so much data, will take a while.
Do you want to talk about the benefits? Sure. So as this slide says, there's invisible and visible benefits. There's flexible and responsive data architecture, a sustainable design, management, manageability of privacy and security, which is always a huge concern for all of us when we're working with information about our students. 360-degree view and understanding of learners and learning, in transparency and impact in learning outcome. So basically, this has the opportunity to enhance teaching and learning, to allow teachers to access all sorts of data in real time, so they don't need to wait around until months have gone by and we miss valuable learning time. Another good part of this is that new reports are always being developed and as participating districts, we can visit the store in EDFI to be able to say, "Oh, look, that school district created this report. That would be very valuable for us." So right now, we're customizing reports that we think will be valuable, but we'll also be able to benefit, benefit from the customized reports that other states and school districts have already created.
These are the 21 districts that are participating in the smaller rural schools. They had to apply. The planning portion right now is they're all, we're all filling out a readiness tool, which is what we talked about today. And then we have another online meeting tomorrow with, with all of the districts. I think there were 10 or 12 districts at our first convening. So there'll be districts that will drop off and there'll be districts, hopefully that will come in. So we just, we've completed, the rest of the districts have not, have completed our readiness tool focusing on where our data is and what types of data reports we would like to focus on. Today, I found out and the rest of us will find out, we also need to prepare a half a page to a page, needs, problems, issues with data management statement for the implementation grant. We will be phasing out of the planning grant at the end of February, beginning of March. And as of today, I have the outline for the implementation grant and so all of us will be working on editing, revising the implementation grant. And so that grant hopefully will be submitted in March and that's when we'll start the real work. They will choose a couple of pilot districts based on who's more ready than others in order to get their data in first to act as models. And the, the 21 districts or whoever ends up actually participating will determine how the project is managed and what the governance structure of the project looks like. The group will also establish plans to broaden the adoption of the EDFI infrastructure and bring other districts into the collaborative from Massachusetts. And again, this will be a long-term project. It won't be easy, but it has a big potential in terms of getting data into the hands of teachers.
So if you look at the map, you can see it's Duxbury, Cohasset, and then a whole bunch of towns in western Massachusetts that are in regional school districts. So again, we're, we're lucky to be able to be a part of this and we'll keep you posted with the work we're doing with this, this upcoming winter and spring.
And it's anticipated, it's just ongoing? Once we're participating in this, we can just keep going?
I'm not sure what the
Yes. So the, the grant funding is to get us up and running and the EDFI Alliance is free. So they will get, they have all the tools. And what's happening is because we have 30 states and all these other districts, it's forcing vendors to comply. So last spring, our Aspen, which is our student information system, got certified. So that's big news because that means a good chunk of our data will go right in. And it shows, and it's basically a plug-and-play. And what the consortium will do is we will have a big storage unit. It'll be partitioned off. So each of the schools will have a protected area that's theirs and then the data will get plugged into that. I've done some work with Boston in the past with their technology department and so they're already saying, "We're actually getting our access data in, in our MCAS data, so we will share with you the map that they did that." But then on the EDFI Alliance website, which is huge and you can go take a look at it, they list certified vendors, certified schools, schools that are participating and it also has a store. It's not really a store because you don't pay anything, but districts who have created data reports, so any reports that we create will get dropped in there and those templates can be used by any of the Alliance. So they're try, they're trying to keep the cost down. We may need to buy a dashboard at some point in order to stick it on the silo in order to manipulate the data because there are, there are some educational dashboards that do a pretty good job of that. But that's kind of in the future.
Great. And when you did the, you know, you did this as part of the Chromebook assessments, you went down to classroom-level software usage. How much, because I imagine getting classroom data into an integrated system without telling every teacher they must use A, B, or C. Like how, how much sort of classroom-based assessment is left up to the discretion of the teacher, what tools to use versus
I think we're using, right now, we're using all of the common assessments that everyone's administering and we're not going to, we're not going to be seeking information that's more individualized, teacher by teacher. We're not going to be giving the students more online assessment that they're not already doing. We're taking the tools that we're already using and already have the data, but we're organizing it into this cloud-based data consortium so that we can access it differently.
Great. Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Sorry.
Yep.
Would love it.
Thank you, Cheryl.
Thank you.
And Danielle.
All right, so next we have review of superintendent's goals to date. Are you going to put them up there too?
No, I wasn't planning to.
Do you want me to?
I don't think so. I'll just, I'll talk, talk through it. I just really want to provide some highlights. So as you all know, as part of our, my superintendent's evaluation, we developed goals in the, in the fall. As part of the process, I'd like to provide a media update and then we'll do a final summative evaluation at the end of the year. And they're broken up into four separate goals. One's what's called the professional practice goal, one's a student learning goal, and two are what we call district improvement goals. So there's four total. And I'll just talk through some highlights. I'll be glad to answer any questions, but this is just meant to really touch base with you and kind of provide some evidence that we're, that we're moving forward or met some of our goals. The first goal is, the professional practice goal is just about enhancing the level of school, school-to-home communication. And that's something, I think I probably said this when I launched this goal, but this is sort of something that is always going to be a goal of mine regardless of whether it falls on, in a, into a formal document or not. It's something that's very important to me into the, into the district. But just a few of the things that we've done under that goal is that we did launch a new website in August and thanks to Cheryl and a lot of other people in district for, for their work. But it's, I think it's much more user-friendly, much more professional, pretty easy to navigate. And we're, we're tracking, you know, Cheryl and I were doing this last week actually, or she was doing it and I walked in on her actually. But, you know, we're actually trying to track the usage, usage to see how, what people are accessing, how they're accessing it, what's, what's seemingly important, you know, to the end user. So we're trying to do a little more data analysis on the backend on that. But that's actually pretty well-received and we continue to try to make sure that we're keeping it up to date, whether it's calendar or news or photos, you know, to, because as you know, websites can get old, old very quickly. But people still do use the website to get, to get a lot of information for the school. There's a lot of other means of communication too, but we are, we still have to have a fairly robust and up-to-date website. So anyway, we did that. That's, it was a kind of a huge project that almost was anticlimactic at the end, but it was really, really a big deal for the district. Also, kind of related, we launched a new, truly a communication, but it's also a marketing platform. I talked about this once before called, the product's called MailChimp. It's one of the industry kind of leaders in this area, but if you've seen some of our mailings, it's really allowing us to create, in my opinion, far more professional-looking mailings, things that are very easy on the eyes, kind of easy to format, kind of clean and streamlined communication products. So I'm really, we're all enjoying it. It's a great product, but it also allows us to track what the end user's doing with it. Are they opening, are they opening the email? Are they clicking on the links if we have a link in there? And I, for one, am fairly obsessed with it. Every time I, I send something out, I, I spend a lot of time on the dashboard, kind of track it to try to, again, trying to determine both what is important for our community, but also is what we're providing of any interest to them. And we kind of learn a lot every time we, we send something out. So it's a really slick product and really sophisticated actually for, for a school department to be using. In fact, launching this thing as a school department was, ended up being a multi-month process because the company didn't really know how to handle us. Because we, we're not quite as nimble as a private sector company with payments and things like that. So anyway, if you, I hope you've noticed, but it's, it's kind of a nice, nice-looking product. And some other things, we are, at the end of January, are going to be launching, we're, I kind of stole this from another district, but Coffees with the District Administration, a series, so to speak. Really just an opportunity to just engage with groups of parents on a drop-in, drop-in basis. So we'll see how that is. We'll start advertising that this week and, you know, we'll see. You know, anytime we can engage even with a handful of people, I think it's really important. So I did a lot last year as part of my entry plan and this year I decided to drag everybody else in with me. So thank you for coming to those. I appreciate that. And also, we continue to use, we do a pretty good job, actually. I'm going to pat myself on the back as a district. Our principals especially do a great job of social media, just both anecdotally and the data proves it, that a lot of our kind of most read and access communication is in the form of social media, whether it's Twitter or Facebook or Instagram. So we're trying to expand our use of that. Me especially at the district level, we've increased, you know, our postings by about 50% year-over-year. And again, we, Danielle and I spent some time on it last week, just kind, we, this Twitter analytics is fairly robust dashboard system and allows you to see who's engaging with, with your tweets, again, who's opening it and who's engaging with it, who's clicking on links and And I still haven't figured out the secret sauce to what's of great interest. I was joking with Danielle, the, my most popular tweet all year is "Me and Clifford the Big Red Dog." So, I have a feeling that Clifford the Big Red Dog is a popular person in that post, but literally, like, that's, that's a strange example, but that's literally what got the most traction out of Central Office this year. So, kind of funny. But we're, we're enjoying the, the analysis part of all of this, really, it really falls under marketing and communication. Second is a student learning goal, and that's, we talked so much about this, but this, this is all about social-emotional learning, trying to increase opportunities for our students with a goal of maximizing, you know, student achievement, and increasing student achievement. So, we're doing a lot of work, and really, this, this is falling to other, other people in the district, including Danielle. But we've launched, we formed and launched an SEL committee, which is doing some great work. We will be, that group will be formally reporting out to the school committee about their year, at the, at the very end of the year, likely in the June meeting. SEL is, if not the top priority, a top priority in all of our schools', school improvement plans, as well as individual administrator and teacher goals. So there's a heavy, heavy focus and an alignment, if you will, throughout the district as it relates to SEL as a priority. Couple of things that I think are worth mentioning, it even goes down to how, how we evaluate teachers, and how they're employing social-emotional learning strategies in their classroom. And it's hard work, actually. It's not something that is as tangible as other things, but we're, we've worked with a consultant over the two years, but this year specifically on SEL, they came and, she came and did a full-day training with our administrators, trying to calibrate how we evaluate SEL in the classroom. So that was really powerful professional development for our administrators. And recently, we administered a really sophisticated survey on SEL. It's a company called Panorama. We administered that survey in grades six through 12. I won't say much about that tonight, other than we're planning on actually probably presenting at least some high-level data, and also just some more information about that process, probably at the next meeting. I talked to Jim Donovan today, but, at the end of the day, I just want to say, we're doing a ton of work with SEL. It's probably one of, it's gonna be one of these things that's, the work is never gonna be over in this area, but all I can tell you is we're really placing a great focus on it, and I think everybody in the district is taking it, taking it very seriously. It's sort of important as anything we do in, in the classroom or in our schools. Kind of jump down to the district improvement goals. The third is pretty self-explanatory, and that is just the development of a strategic plan. I gave you a quick update on it at the beginning of the meeting, and I'll just suffice it to say, it's, it's been the focus of a lot of our work in the district from the summer, you know, up through today, and it will continue all the way for the rest of the year. And I can't sort of overstate, it's taking a lot of time, but it's really exciting work, and it's really important. And I'm really happy about the process to date. It's, as I think I mentioned earlier, besides being thorough, it's also a really inclusive process. And I mentioned it on, on my update here, but even the survey, you know, for what it's worth, you know, getting over almost 900 responses to a community survey in a town this size is huge. It is a, it is a, is a big response, and to me, it's a, it's kind of a sign of how much a community values its public education system, that when we ask them their opinions, that, you know, they want, they want to share it. So, just one example, but I think it's, it's a process that's, that's working, and I'm kind of excited about the, the outcomes. And at the end of the day, just, I'll say this too, I, our, the final product is gonna be, it's gonna be lean, and it's gonna be a kind of a living, breathing document. It's not gonna be a 200-page binder, I just want to tell you that upfront. It's gonna be very specific targeted goals with very specific action plans and action items. And so I think it's gonna be a really nimble, it's gonna be a nimble document, it's gonna be one that we're gonna be able to get our arms around, as a, as a district and as a, as a school committee. So again, stay tuned. I hope to present that in March. And then, finally, and certainly, another hugely important goal is, final goal is about school, school district safety and security. And we've talked a lot about this at school committee and elsewhere, but we are intensely focused on ensuring that our procedures and protocols around student safety are current, and that we have the appropriate level of training and information, you know, for our staff. And we're really just committed to it. I can't say it any more directly than that. I think the highlight of, one of the highlights of our year to date is, we did a, and I mentioned this in past, but we did a training on October 19th in collaboration with the Duxbury Police Department, that it was an all-day training. And to show you how important it was, we used one of our full-day professional development days, which we, it's like gold in a school district, but we used that for safety and security. It just shows you kind of what a priority it is for us. But we did a full-day training that focused on some newly revised safety and security protocols. You know, we're talking things like active shooter training, you know, what happens in the midst of active shooters. And it was a really hands-on scenario-based training. And I'll say, I've done a lot of this training in my career, and a lot of us have, but this was, I don't know how to describe it, our staff, it was the most engaged I've ever seen a staff around school safety and security. And it's almost sad, because it's the times, it's the time we live in, but they were so focused and so engaged on, on the training that really, it really blew my mind. But it shows that they are, they are, I think they, first time ever, that they truly feel a need to have this training, whereas I think over the past 10, 20 years, people have been like, yeah, I don't really want to talk about that, I want to talk about teaching and learning, I don't want to kind of deal with, but this was, this was, this felt different to me, but it was exceptional. And by the way, not it was related, it wasn't related to the goal, but our partnership with our public safety officials in towns continue, continues to grow and continues to strengthen, and that's really all-town departments. So this happened to be police, but I would extend the same sentiment to fire, and I'd extend it to DPW and other departments as well. But it was a great collaboration.
Did you, you also extended the training to Alden?
We've, so that was in October. We've, since then, as I say here, we have done Alden.
Yeah, with the live shooter drill?
And Alden's having a continuation...
Slightly modified, but it was, it was the same content.
Okay.
This Friday, when we have a full-day PD day, Alden's having another session of that training. So they had an overview at a staff meeting, I believe, and then now they'll, they'll be going through the full training with Officer Jamali.
Yeah, per their request, they wanted more.
Yeah, a teacher said to me, I don't know what live gunfire sounds like, like, I would love that training.
Yeah, yeah. They wanted, they wanted more, and they wanted more time to go through some of the scenarios that we had created for them, so.
Great.
And that same training was also recently done with students at the, at the high school and middle school, you know, modified training, you know, age-appropriate, but I'll say equally intense. You know, I was there, I was there for it. But it's, it's just really important work, I, there's no other way to say it. The other thing I mentioned in the update is, you all know this, but we launched a, an anonymous tip system, anonymous reporting system, I think we launched it in early September. And really can't divulge a lot of information about that system, other than to say it's working. We received numerous tips between the beginning of the year and today that were actionable, that led to us needing to respond to a particular tip, and the outcome has been really successful. So again, I can't, that's, this is obviously confidential information, but it's really working, I'm, I'm happy about it. It's, we have to manage it. I mean, it's something that, again, it's another thing, and, you know, our administrators are having to manage this, but I, I think it's worth it. We have to filter through some things, but the ones that have required action, at the end of the day, you feel really good that you, you have the system, and that people are getting more and more comfortable using it. So we'll continue to expand our advertisement of that, and, but just based on the numbers, people know it's, it's there. So anyway, that's, I thought that was excellent. And, and then the final thing on that, it just as relates to safety and security, as you all know, several of our capital budget items were focused on safety and security. They were, they were among our top priorities, if you recall, for a reason, and it's not official yet, but I expect those, I expect those top ones to be funded. And I'm, I'm really grateful that both the town administrator, the town finance director, as well as the town boards who are approving the capital plan, feel that safety and security has to be a top priority in a 21st century school department. So, that is it. I'd be glad to answer any questions, but I think we're making great progress, and we have half a year left, so.
Excellent. Well, I think it's a lot of progress.
Yeah, I'd like to say kind of again what I said the last meeting. You know, in the context of where we've come in your short tenure, I remember in terms of last year, kind of an entry plan was the primary objective. And if we look around the table, except for Cheryl, Heather, and Katie, and Danielle, you're new to the district. You've developed the leadership team, you know, we have new building principals in the high school and the middle school, we have multiple new department heads. It's, I have so much, and it's not one of your stated goals, but to, to have affected that much change in such a short time period is remarkable, because it's hard to do in any context, but to do what I imagine in a public school context is really hard. And I think that's a remarkable sign of leadership, John, that you've been able to do that. And it's not every one of the hires is gonna be exactly optimal, but the fact that you had a standard that you expected, and you sought out people that met that standard, and ultimately, many of you will exceed his expectations. So I'm, I'm super, it's remarkable, really, in the, in the short time that you've been in the district. So I just want to commend you, and also welcome all of you again, because I think we're a district that's on the move. And, you know, we have, we have a lot of great things to look forward to. So, so, you know, you're not gonna be doing this every year, that's for sure, because now we have a chance to stabilize, we have a team that I think can take us to the places we want to go. Strategic plan, having a team, having the financial resources and the community support to take Dux, Duxbury's Public School District to a different level, as I think we're putting the pieces in place. So, yeah, credit to you for that.
Thank you.
Well said, Peter. Okay, so our action items are, the first one is to vote to accept a gift for an artificial, for artificial turf for the lacrosse wall area in accordance with policy KCD, Public Gifts to Schools. And that's the area that's behind the onion field, softball fields, where they put a lacrosse wall for the, all the students to use, and there's just gonna be an area of turf in front of it, right?
That's it, yeah. It's all, yeah, exactly. It's just a, if you haven't seen it, a lacrosse wall, it's just a big concrete, big concrete wall. And this, this newest donation or fundraised, fundraised funds just will allow, just for a cleaner and better turf in front of the wall for our, for our student athletes. So, there's no, no school department expenditures related to this purchase, it's all fundraised by, in this case, it funnels through the athletic boosters, and, and in part, the girls' lacrosse program. But just, I figured, just because our policy does expect us to accept public gifts, I thought this fell, kind of fell under that, that category.
Okay.
It's a nice project, and we really appreciate the work that the community's done to fund. It's gonna be, kind of a really nice, kind of first-class facility over there.
Great.
And did we accept a gift for artificial turf or lacrosse wall?
A second.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Our next vote is to approve the overseas trip to the Dominican Republic.
Yeah, so this, this is a really exciting trip, or opportunity. So this trip was presented to us by Diane McHigan, who's the oral language curriculum supervisor. I believe she's partnering on this trip with Kathy McCarthy, who's the science curriculum supervisor. And so it's sort of interdisciplinary opportunity, where they're looking to take students overseas to the Dominican Republic on a, on a service-learning trip, which to me, that's what, that's what makes this trip so exciting. Naturally, there'll be some tourism associated with, with travel, but they're also doing service and learning about, and learning about the Dominican culture. And so, I asked Diane, and she did a really nice job of providing a, it's actually two-page, but a, kind of a summary-level document on the trip. It's gonna take place next February vacation, and she lays out the academic objectives and a lot of the activities that they'll be doing both prior and during the trip. And I don't, I don't know if you've had a chance to read it.
Yeah, it was February 2020, right? It wasn't this?
Yeah, it's a year from February.
I know, it's not February on life, though.
It's a year from February. It really, it really looks like an exciting opportunity. And the concept of service learning to me is, it's a great first trip under our new policy. Right? It's really, it's academic, it's fun, it's worldly, you know? So, I strongly recommend approving it, and I don't know if you have any questions about it.
I don't. I think it looks great. So can we have a motion to approve the 2020 trip to the Dominican?
Let's move.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right. And then our last vote is to approve a scholarship from the Duxbury Fax Committee, and it's a, the amount is $500, and I was communicating with Ann Ward today, so it will be, that it's the same process as many of the other scholarships, where it'll go into, in through the guidance department with Lisa Dombowski. They fax set their own criteria, and then they will choose the recipient of the scholarship. And it'll be an annual scholarship, I do believe, but for the share, it's for $500. Is that how?
I'm sorry.
It's all right.
Say that again.
It's gonna be an annual 500?
That's, yeah, that's the information I have, yeah.
Okay. So are there any questions about accepting the Fax scholarship? No? Can I have a motion?
Move that we approve the Duxbury Fax Scholarship.
A second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Yay, Matt, we're almost done. Other comments, issues for future meetings, any other business?
I just had one comment, a little Christmas holiday reading. John Kennedy in 1959, as a senator, and this ties back to the ADL program, was commissioned by the ADL to write an essay, and it was called Nation of Immigrants. It's a short read, just fascinating, because it's, it's up till the early 1900s, we had no immigration policy. Basically, anyone who had the wherewithal to come to the United States was welcomed. And at the time that it was written in 1959, 43 million Americans out of 200, over 25% were actual immigrants. They weren't born here, they came from somewhere else. But the challenges that we're facing 60 years ago are just very much the same today, the sense of, there are too many people coming from foreign countries, and it's changing the culture, and we're losing. So it's, it's such an interesting read, because it turns out, cycling over time, there's been this openness and acceptance of foreign culture and immigration, and then there's been a, a pushback against it. So it's just a fascinating read. 60 years ago, he was a U.S. Senator at the time, and the ADL commissioned him, because there was a lot of pushback in immigration from Eastern Europe and Southern Europe after World War II coming into the United States. And it's just, each ethnic group, over time, faced similar, you know, opposition and resistance and persecution when they came to the United States. And then, the people get assimilated, and this has been the great, great genius, if you will, of our country. So, so anyhow, history sometimes repeats itself. But it's, in the end, it's a pretty optimistic look, because I think we'll all, in the end, recognize that this is one of the things that's made America great, is that waves of immigration bring in new ideas, new cultures, and it enriches all of us, so.
Thanks.
Great read, if you have a couple hours. It's really an essay, it's not even a book, so.
Great. Thank you. Okay, no public comment, I don't see anybody hiding out there, so can I have a motion to adjourn? adjourn?
This is moved.
A second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Next meeting, the sixth.